Mr. Hirons, can you read us out of closed session?
Whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore it be resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you pull the board?
Mr. Connolly?
Agreed.
Ms. Decatur?
Agreed.
Ms. Egan?
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Mr. Hirons?
Agreed.
Mr. McCosker?
Agree.
Madam Chair, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have any motions from closed session? Mr. Connolly?
The motion that we accept a superintendent's recommendation to appoint the principal for Hampton Oaks Elementary School?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and enthusiastically seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, can you please make our announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce that Mr. Alan Hicks is the school board's appointment this evening as principal for Hampton Oaks Elementary School.
Please stand up.
Since July 2014, Mr. Hicks has served as the assistant principal at Hampton Oaks Elementary. Mr. Hicks began his teaching career at Hugh Mercer Elementary in Fredericksburg. He then joined the faculty of Colonial Forge High School. Mr. Hicks transferred to Hampton Oaks as PE teacher and became principal intern in 2013. Mr. Hicks has had a variety of leadership responsibilities while at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. He served as special education designee and as site-based testing coordinator. He collaborated with central office and regional representatives to bring an adult education program to Hampton Oaks for parents to learn English. He also started Sir Hawks, a program emphasizing strength, integrity, and relentlessness to help prepare fifth-grade boys for transition to middle school. Mr. Hicks has a Bachelor of Science in Physical Education from Bridgewater College. He earned his Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University. Congratulations, Alan.
Congratulations. Next on our agenda, we will be having our North Stafford JROTC, but before we stand for them to present the colors, I would like to just at least recognize them that recently our North Stafford Air Force JROTC has been involved in many activities, including the North Stafford High School Senior Citizen Prom, our Operation Finally Home Ceremony, and the North Stafford High School Softball Game. They will also be included in the grand opening for the new 610 Walmart Neighborhood Mark that's really close by, so they've been very busy, and I ask if you will rise as we present the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank our cadets this evening. Cadet Fraylin, Cadet Lumpkin, Cadet Gavino, Cadet Sagavdraka, and Cadet Trahilo. It's always great to have our ROTCs help us in this part. Next, moving on to our approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any deletions or edits to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to one of our favorite parts, of course, of our evening is our awards. We will, I'd like to recognize Dr. Sue Clark to start us off this evening, our Executive Director of Student Services, for presentation of awards. Ms. Decatur, would you like to turn them down?
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Benson. With me this evening is Matthew Doyle, one of our graduates from Mountain View High School. Matthew joins us tonight as a Special Olympics athlete, was the athlete of the year last year, and has been a global messenger for Special Olympics Virginia, so I'd like to recognize Matthew. Many of you know that in 2005, back then, one of our adaptive physical education teachers and one parent volunteer started our Special Olympics track team that was open to all eligible students in Stafford County schools. The first team had approximately 10 students, that's where we started, five parent volunteers and that adaptive PE teacher. In 2006, basketball and soccer were added. Currently, the Stafford County Public Schools Stafford Titans are represented by more than 175 of our students, participating in more than three sports. We have many student coaches who are with us this evening and our students from all of our high schools and more volunteers than we can count. In the weekend of March 24 and 25, we hosted the state Special Olympics Basketball Championships as we do every year and brought in more than 800 athletes and coaches from across the Commonwealth. Stafford Schools was represented by students on two full-court teams, two half-court teams, and three skills athletes. We also had many Stafford High School students who volunteered, coached our basketball, and cheerleading athletes, and participated as Unified Players during the 2017 season. The Unified Players has really become quite expanded. So, as I call your name, we do have many of our athletes and coaches not able to join us tonight, but as I call your name, could you please come forward because once again our students, athletes did really, really well. Our Stafford Titans Scarlet Unified Team, we had gold, two gold medals. One of our gold medalists is here tonight, Trevon Lewis, if you would come forward, along with student coach Bryce Johnson. Our Stafford Titans Red also took gold in the basketball games, Jonathan Schell and Matthew Payne and student coach Dylan Greenwell. Stafford Titans Blue Team took a silver medal and Austin Carpenter is with us this evening. Our Stafford Titans Skills Team took gold, William Graber. We would also like to recognize Reese Van Hook, one of our student coaches as well. Reese? Thanks to all the athletes, coaches, student volunteers, and congratulations, thanks very much.
Now, Dr. Clark, you want to get in there, and I know next year you're going to come sit in the audience just to watch this great event. I'd like to next recognize Ms. Anna Marie Bellino, our Coordinator of Fine and Performing Arts for a presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. It's my pleasure this evening to welcome some of our most gifted young singers, very young. Eleven of our elementary music students participated in the 2017 All-Virginia Elementary Chorus. The event was held back in April, on April 1st, at Western Branch High School in Chesapeake, Virginia. Two hundred students and about forty-five schools participated in this honors choir. Quite a cool experience. Students, please come forward when your name is called and remain at the front. From Hampton Oaks Elementary, Shannon Edwards, Sarah Gielan, Isaiah Mason, and Zion Shumun. And I'd also love for their elementary music teacher, Mrs. Param, to come forward. And from Falmouth Elementary, Allison Devlin, Elise Krasinski, Annalise Ortiz Lugo, Vanessa Rodriguez Vasquez, Aiden Sutton, Jonas Tremann, and Danielle Williams. And would also like to recognize their music teacher, Mr. Peabody. Congratulations to these singers and to their amazing music teachers who have enthusiasm for music and commitment to teaching these awesome young singers. Congratulations, let's give them another round of applause.
Next, I would like to recognize Ms. Cherie Johnson, our Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, for the presentation of awards.
Already here.
I know, you were on it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Benson. It is my pleasure to recognize our television interns. These are the students who work in our television program with Stafford County Public Schools. Each week, the students provide service that allows thousands of people to view our school board meetings and other events in the division. Their knowledge, professionalism, and expertise allows SCPS to keep the community and parents informed. The SCPS educational channel airs news and information about the division 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Students helped to produce over 125 hours of television this year, and 100 of those hours included live broadcast. This group of students from Brookpoint and North Stafford High Schools work an average of 11 hours each week on broadcasting projects. Tonight, we would like to say thank you for the dedication and service to the students and their teacher, Mr. Bill Leep. Please come forward as I call your name. Amber Brown, Isaac Burtzel, Kelly Hat, Khabab Hassan, Bailey Crossick, Richard West, and Thank you all for your service to the division. We couldn't do it without you, and we really appreciate all of your hard work. Come on in there, Bill.
And I would like to notice that, you know, having our students be involved in our school board meetings also probably saves us lots of money based on the professional services hired across the street, but ours is just as good and we have such great students, so I really do thank them every week for what they do. Next, I would like to recognize Mr. Tom Nichols, our Chief Academic Officer for Secondary Schools, for a presentation of award.
Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Benson. It is my pleasure to recognize the Virginia Association of Secondary Schools 2017 Virginia Outstanding Middle School Principal of the Year. Would Mr. Mark Smith come forward to be recognized? Mr. Smith, the principal at Stafford Middle School, was selected based on his excellence in the following areas: His willingness to take risks and improve student learning; his anticipation of emerging programs and acting in effective ways to resolve them; his collaboration with teachers and other staff members to improve educational programs and student achievement; His involvement in the school community and the use of community resources for our students. These are just a few of the many reasons Mr. Smith was selected as the Best Middle School Principal for the Commonwealth. His award will be presented at the 90th Annual Virginia Middle and High School Principals' Conference this July, or this June, excuse me. It is my honor and privilege to congratulate Mr. Smith and to recognize his outstanding accomplishments with the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals, Middle School Principal of the Year. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Next, we will be moving on to our citizen comments. Please know, oh, we do. Okay, whoops. Hold on, I will get it. Oh, thank you. We are not done because we'd like to do our awards. I'd like to recognize Mark Mayer, our Mountain View High School Technology Education Instructor and Faculty Advisor for the Technology Student Association, for presentation of awards. Come forward. I can't believe I missed it, sorry.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, and board members, and Dr. Benson. As you know, TSA is a career and technology student organization, that's technology. And it provides an opportunity for students to develop skills and compete in a wide range of events, just about everything from fashion design to manufacturing systems. This year, we had over 32 registered student members participating. And in my three years as the Faculty Advisor over at Mountain View, our Mountain View chapter has had quite a few successes, but from what I understand, this year has brought home the highest number of high-placing trophies ever from the state, from the Virginia State Competition, where they were also recognized with an Outstanding High School Award. We had six first places. We had first place in Engineering Design with Hannah Kankel, Nick in Fijian, Nick Greeley, and Tim Sharp. Systems Control was also first place with Tim Sharp, Ethan Hamilton, and Sam Lickman. Technology Bowl Team, we had first place with Sam Lickman, Ethan Hamilton, and Tim Sharp. Technology Bowl Written, Sam Lickman took first place in the state. 3D Animation, Ethan Hamilton, Victoria Terez, and Lily Nell. And On-Demand Video, in first place, we had Hannah Kankel, Nick in Fijian, Nick Greeley, Darian Birch, and Drew Porter. Second place, we had four, I'm sorry, we had three second places. Fashion Design with Isabella Olson, Kelly Akers, Sidney Hewitt, and Gianna Amabile. Digital Video Production, we had second place with Hannah Kankel, Nick in Fijian, Nick Greeley, Jacob Schwartz and Darian Birch. And Technology Written Bowl, Written, Tim Sharp. In the top 10, we had, we had quite a few places also. We had Architectural Design, Joe Altifor, Aiden Anderson, Andrew Porter, and Andrew Fijalkowski. Problem Solving, we took a fifth place with Jacob Schwartz and Andrew Porter. Children's Stories, we had a fourth place with Kim Sharp, Amanda, Kim Sharp, Amanda Wyke, Sidney Hewitt, Gianna Amabile, and Isabella Olson. And Technology Bowl Written, Ethan Hamilton. So I'd like to call those members who were present and ask you all to celebrate the achievements of this year's phenomenal team. And I also think it's appropriate to honor and thank the parents that provide so much of their time and the team facilitators, the actors, the team facilitators. This could not be done without them. So, could the parents also stand up, please, and we can give you a little round of applause?
All right, now we will move on to citizen comments. Citizen comments this evening, if you have not signed in, that is not a problem, but I will start with those who have signed in after I read the address, and then if you still would like to speak, I will also make an invitation at the end, so feel free to come forward at that time. So speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to each speaker. We use the stoplight system. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining. When the red light comes on, your three minutes have expired. You have about five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. There is not a dialogue during public comment. This is a time for the speaker to place their comments. You may check the box if you want a written response or not, but there will not be a dialogue between us and the speaker. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So I'm going to read off the first five names, if you all would sort of line up off to the side so you don't have to climb over everybody and all that stuff, and then after that, I will invite others forward. So I have Michael Strobel, Lauren Donahue, Morgan Everett, Michelle Staggers, and Tim White.
Thought I might skip down here like the girl from the chorus.
That was one.
If I could request that myself and the three others that are going to speak on girls' lacrosse could just pool our minutes, it might be more efficient.
Sure.
My name is Michael Strobel. I live at 10 Mount Arrow Rat Lane, and I'm here representing Stafford Lacrosse Association. I know that this board fields quite a few complaints and irritations tonight, though we're here for a different purpose, we're here to thank you. You might, some of you might recall that in 2013, a group of parents and students petitioned the school board to implement girls' lacrosse in Stafford County schools, and the board voted unanimously to do that. And we're here tonight to thank you and also provide you a few stories from some of our athletes about the ramifications of the board decision. Maybe this will help you think about the ramifications of future decisions that you make. I'd like to start by saying that as of today, there are about a dozen former Stafford County girls' lacrosse players that are now playing at the collegiate level, many of them on scholarship. And more importantly, we have hundreds of girls' lacrosse players at our five high schools on the varsity and junior varsity level. There was a question in some people's mind at the time when we were asking for this of whether or not there was enough interest to sustain girls' lacrosse in this county, and that's been proven resoundingly true. Our five high schools have represented the county tremendously well, not only in their play on the field, but in their sportsmanship. All five of them have competed very well, I'm proud to say, with much more established programs to the south of us and to the north of us. And in fact, just last year, Colonial Forge High School girls represented the county in the final four of the state lacrosse tournament at the highest level, the 6A Division. So they're representing us, they're doing us proud, and I mean all five schools. I would like to request the board's continued vigilance on issues of gender equality. At the time, the school board was woefully out of compliance with Title IX in spite of having a full-time Title IX coordinator and five athletic directors who should have been paying attention. So this is something that needs continual monitoring, and we appreciate this body's effort to that end. But ultimately, I'm here tonight to thank you, thank the board, especially those of you who were here then, but all of you for the decisions you make for the county, they really do affect people's lives. And that's all for me. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Lauren Donahue. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lauren Donahue, and I live at 40 Stephanaga Road, and I'm here with Stafford Lacrosse Association, but mainly women's lacrosse. And I was here in 2013, about to go into my senior year of high school at Mountain View High School, and I asked you guys to give us girls' lacrosse in our county, and you guys did, and I want to say thank you. It definitely was the best senior president I could ask for, and I'm glad that my love for the game, other girls can share that love for the game now. Michelle, and Morgan and I are actually in the elementary schools and the middle schools right now, in the PE classes, teaching lacrosse to the girls, and we've noticed a lot of interest in the elementary level and the middle school level. And we just wanted to maybe give you an idea that we're doing like a free clinic after school so girls can get involved, and maybe we could eventually, in the future, have lacrosse at the middle school level. Lacrosse has offered me a way to pay for education. I go to the University of Virginia's College at Wise, and I'll be a senior this year. My freshman year was the first year that we had girls' lacrosse at our, or women's lacrosse at our college. So there is plenty of programs out there that are
These members spoke of a pre-Labor Day start not being necessary, and they were concerned about transportation during the hot August month, family vacation schedules being affected, sports schedules being interrupted at the high school level, and how change will make little or no impact on student performance. A few of the more senior teachers were less enthusiastic about the effect of an early start. A few members did question a bias that they had seen or interpreted the survey being, in that the answers may not have been in their minds more freely open to a fair or concise answer. Another important concern voiced by representatives from the schools was the loss of critical income to teachers who worked that summer during summer income. We already know that teachers, especially the younger, less experienced teachers, the income is critical to them. SCA members who voiced support believe starting the school year earlier was more appropriate and more closely aligned to the curriculum needs than our post-Labor Day start as we've had it for years. These teachers spoke in favor of ending the first semester before the beginning of the winter break and before Christmas. That break, the break we have, does support, or the new break would support a consistency some teachers see as necessary by finishing the semester at the same time and before the long Christmas break. Representatives described members as supporting ending the school year also with SOL testing as another positive. A start earlier in the school year would hopefully allow schools to be more efficient in learning and not wasting time. One last thing, just real quick. Okay, no matter what this board decides, the teachers and staff will do the best of whatever calendar that you all set out, like we always do. So, just a few-
If you have your comments, you can leave them.
Okay, we will. Thank you very much.
Thanks. See, you got it down, you got the clipboard. Anybody else, please come forward.
After you, Madam Chair, Mr. Hirons, and members of the board, I just want to make a quick, off-the-cuff, thank you for acknowledging our elementary kids who went to Allstate Course this year. As you guys know, we have an incredible cadre of fine arts teachers throughout our school division, and particularly, I think we have a truly exceptional group of elementary music teachers who truly go above and beyond to help facilitate these opportunities for these kids, and it truly does mean so much to the children and to us. It's very encouraging when we see that you take those times to make these special exceptions. The Allstate Course is a really big deal. I think Ms. Ann Marie Bellino said this, but only 200 kids run across the entire Commonwealth, only 200 in 5th through 6th grade, maybe 4th, get selected for this ensemble, and I think that's out of a pool of 60-some-odd-thousand potential candidates that could make it. So, just from the bottom of my heart, thank you for doing that. Thank you for encouraging us and making that special exception for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, again, nobody leaping over the chairs, so I am going to...anybody moving? Okay. All right, I will close public comments, and we will move on to our Board Member Committee reports this evening. Anyone want to start? Ms. Egan, you want to start us?
Sure. Last night, just last night, we met with our counterparts on the Board of Supervisors for the Joint Schools Committee meeting, and we went through some of the standing items that we have on our agenda, which is Joint CIP, Shared Services, and some other things that we've decided to add to our agenda. As far as the Joint CIP goes, we have voted on a process, finally, we've settled on a process, that passed out a committee and is going to be brought to our respective boards for approval. At the end of the conversation, or the end of the agenda item, we talked a little bit about doing maybe a seven-on-seven so that we could all be briefed together on the Joint CIP process and what they've come up with, what staff's come up with as far as process goes. So, Holly, remind me, we're looking, or Dr. Benson, November to do this, or maybe a little before? Is that right?
I think they were going to go to the Fab next.
That's right, Fab, and then it was going to be a full board, seven-on-seven. So, that's where we're at with that. Shared Services, we've narrowed down, our staff has narrowed down a list. It's a manageable starting point, so we continue to work on that. I asked if there was any other issues that we need to be talking about between the two boards, the School Board and the Board of Supervisors, and everyone was in agreeance that we need to put our heads together when it comes to legislative issues. The first, the very first item that was thrown out for legislative attention was the cost-to-compete issue. So, we've, you know, the Board of Supervisors has a lobbyist that we can utilize. They'll help to advocate on our behalf to have this addressed at the state level. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, great. Mr. Hirons, do you want to?
We had a Fab meeting last week, on the 17th. A couple of things discussed there of interest. Something that could also be of interest to legislative is Impact Aid and how we have fallen just below the threshold the last two fiscal years in trying to figure out why that is. Mr. Fulmer gave us a good background information on that. We're still trying to figure out, he's still trying to figure out, you know, our community's changing, and we don't, we're not going to meet that criteria, or if we still have issues with forms being returned and why not Accra County and everybody. Mr. Conley offered up to speak with Mr. Whitman's office to try to find some, Congressman Whitman's office, to try to explore some legislative options there at the federal level on that. We also opened up discussions, started talking about our budget priorities for FY '19? Good golly, FY '19. We wanted to try and get ahead of the game this year. We've always, you know, it's always something that's very important. We're always exhausted after we complete one budget year and don't really want to jump into the next, but we thought it was important to, you know, let's take the momentum we have, the input we've received on this year, the budget we just passed, and start working on the budget priorities for the following fiscal year. Those budget priorities will be, continue to be developed, and we will bring those September-ish to this board for approval and for public hearing from the members of the public. We would like to hear from folks on what we want to see in the budget, FY '19 budget, as we're starting to develop that. Our next Finance and Budget Committee meeting is scheduled for June 29th at 6:00 PM, right back here. And on the agenda will certainly be, amongst other things, continued discussion of the budget priorities. So, I had for it.
Any other, any?
Yep.
Ms. Decatur.
See if I can scroll back up. I've got quite a bit, and I don't want to forget any important information. So, the Special Education Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, May 16th, and I do want to say that the more time I get to spend with the people on this committee, the more I recognize how far our special education programs and services have come, just over the last decade even. And this is due in large part to this committee and the time that they've put in. Many of the members have served, I learned this past week, that many of these members have served for, what's it, a decade or more on this committee. They've met every Tuesday evening for 10 years, some of them, or, I mean, once a month on Tuesdays. And learning that last week was just, you know, a really special thing. So, I just wanted to give them that acknowledgement and thank them for their undying commitment to our community and the children who benefit from these programs and services. Sue, I also want to give special recognition to you, Dr. Clark, who has also served on this committee for how long?
18.
So, that, I mean, that's huge. I'm blown away, truly. You have been at the helm of the Special Education Department, and your work with our students is greatly appreciated. So, I didn't want that to go without saying, first of all. So, a particular project, which has been eight years in the making, has begun to come to fruition, and that is called Project Search. Stafford County Public Schools have officially partnered with Mary Washington Hospital to offer internship opportunities for special education students who are within one year of graduating. It's an amazing opportunity for our students, another amazing opportunity for our students. And you have made this happen, so, along with the committee. The committee has discussed giving us a presentation. I want you guys to fully understand exactly what Project Search is and, you know, what the benefits are going to be for our students. So, they are going to give us a presentation on it, and I'll let them get into all of the details of what Project Search is and does. But 16 students did go through the interview process, and 11 were selected, so it's going to be a really, really amazing opportunity for our kids. And then, the only other thing I wanted to do is thank the Fine and Performing Arts for partnering with our Special Education Advisory Committee and putting on the performance of, what was it, Peter Pan. There were a lot of families that were just very thankful to be able to come to a performance and just feel comfortable. And so, I just wanted to thank you guys for that.
Mr. McCosker, do you have a?
No. I'll just follow on very quickly with Ms. Decatur's report. As our Head Start Policy Council, as we wind up our year, Head Start does not, a majority of Head Start does not follow the full calendar year, but we are working to add those days through different grants. Just wanted to say, if you know anybody eligible for Head Start, it's such a great program. We were seeing some of the great progress and things that are going on down there. We do have, though, a waiting list on our Head Start program and our three-year-olds, and, but we want to make sure that we identify as many kids as possible. So, the great work down there, they are beginning to do their graduations this week and next week, and it's really exciting what they've been able to do this year, and it's such an honor to serve on their Policy Council. They have a very active parent group this year that's involved with Policy Council, which is just great to hear what's going on down there and all the great work going there.
Madam Chair, real quick, before we move away from committee reports, for some reason, I thought it was going to be on the agenda for discussion. Public Day School is one of our committees that I sit on, and from the initial time of me getting on it, there was always two members. And lately, I've only been seeing that there's one member on it, which is me, and then Ms. Decatur as an alternate, and I don't think that's correct. So, I would like to look at the bylaws and see, if we're supposed to have two appointed members sitting on that committee, we need to fix that. We need to get it on the agenda. We need to make sure we're, we've got the right number of people on it with, you know, even if we need to have an alternate, we need to have-
I don't even think there's bylaws, because it's sort of a joint committee. I believe if you would like to, with the pleasure of the board, make a motion tonight to go ahead and remedy having, because I know that the Board of Supervisors has two full-fledged member, I don't know, two members, that the School Board should do the same. I would say tonight, if it's the pleasure of the board, let's, you know, take care of it at least tonight.
Yeah, that doesn't need to go on the agenda. We can just knock it out.
Even Steven, there you go.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reinstate the second-member position on the Public Day School Committee. And I nominate that person to be Jamie Decatur.
Second.
She's kidding.
You're going to be overturned by the majority.
That's right. Any discussion?
If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, because I think that'll be great going forward to make sure that we are, as Ms. Healy pointed out, even Steven. So, we like that. So, with that, next on our agenda is Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just, it's kind of a quick shout-out to Dr. Mira and the folks in Technology. We, I moved to Google from Groupwise this week, right? And was I last, was I like the last one?
The school board is last.
We are last.
The school board is last, okay.
Remember, that's what we're doing in two weeks.
Quite, I'm just, I'm super impressed with how easy that migration was, and folks in Technology have done this all across the division, all of our elementary schools, all of our middle schools, all of our high schools, and it really was amazing. It's like, stop accessing your email at 1:00, go to training at 1:30, and everything's there inside of Google, all of your email, all of your calendar information. It just was an incredible, incredible transition, very smooth. And so, just a shout-out to the folks in Technology for making that happen, and we'll get you all shortly, right?
And I heard that Mr. Hiran even moved over, and he was successful in it, so congratulations.
And the caveman didn't pound?
So, on that note, remember, School Board members, at our work session, which we have yet to determine exactly the time, we have allotted a half hour at our work session on the 13th to do our transition. Is that correct? Anything else, Dr. Benson? Oh, okay. All right, moving along, our next is consent items. Do I have a motion regarding consent?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additions or comments regarding consent? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All consent items, 1101 and 1102, are approved. Moving on to our action items, we will start with 12.01 regarding Brent's Mill 2 and a non-transportation walking zone.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.01.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 12.02, we will be regarding Liberty Knolls and Liberty Knolls West, walking zones for Winding Creek Elementary. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.02.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions regarding this item? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, continuing with our Liberty Knolls and Liberty Knolls West regarding walking zones for Colonial Forge High School. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.03.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chairman, perhaps if someone could just explain the difference between 12.02 and 12.03 for those that are just hearing this, because in theory, it sounds like the same item.
Right, the walking zones being different for Winding Creek versus Colonial Forge. Mr. Hiran, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to come forward, if you don't mind.
Yes, Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Benson. 12.02 addresses the elementary school, and it actually has some timelines associated with that that will be delayed. We'll continue to provide a bus service from Route 630 or Courthouse Road as those developments mature, and as that inner connectivity is established, then those students will be able to start walking. And we'll, of course, inform the community as well as the School Board when we actually implement that. The high school, or 12.03, is associated with the high school, and it involves walking to the high school across 630, and it involves a signal there at the entrance of Colonial Forge, which will have, be installed this summer, and it will be, have pedestrian crosswalk notification, where automated notification, you hit the button, and it helps assist those students walking across 630. We will not implement that walking zone until that signal is operational, installed and operational.
Mr. Hiran, could you just clarify that the distances the high school students will be walking are not the same as the distances the elementary school?
That's correct.
Just so people understand, because this is a topic that doesn't come up often, but, you know, is important.
Yes, ma'am, and so, our policy does not allow us to create a walking zone and have students walk more than a mile. Both of these routes are lessened, especially for the elementary school kids. We provided that in the agenda item. The farthest distance to the property or to Winding Creek is identified as well as the high school. So, they're a little different. Yes, ma'am.
And I guess just to point out, even though the agenda item does mention that a non-transportation safety team does convene, that includes our principals, sheriff's office. Lots of people go into looking at these zones moving forward. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Was there a motion made?
I believe so, yes.
I just have one comment. I'm going to vote no on this, just because I still, I'm just not comfortable with these kids going across Courthouse Road, and I think staff has made it safe. I trust that it is safe, it's just my own conscience having concern and seeing, watching. Now, these are high school students, fortunately. Hopefully, they're safer, probably not. But for the walking zone for Conway Elementary, we have kids that are not in a walking zone that, but some of the parents do walk across Leland Road, which is probably, can be as heavily traveled during the times because there are VRE trains leaving in the morning when kids are walking to school, and they're with their parents. And it's, I'm comfortable, it's safe. I've been at that corner and seen some concerning times, even with new crosswalks and new signals and everything. So, just for my own conscience, I'm just going to vote no on this.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion carries 621. Moving on to our information items, we will start with 1301, which is the superintendent's proposed, excuse me, proposals to modify the regulation regarding acceptable and responsible use of computers and technology. I believe this will be Dr. Mira, I believe. So, are there questions for Dr. Mira regarding this item?
Can you give us the thumbnail of what this is?
Yeah, this is both a policy and a regulation that we're recommending to go hand-in-hand with our move to the Google education platform. We haven't updated our policy in some time. Basically, the policy is going to provide additional emphasis on student data privacy, because as you know, it's very easy to share information on the Google platform with just a link. So, the policy and the regulation both will serve as the basis for professional development and awareness to our staff and students on acceptable and responsible use, not only with Google, but with everything we use.
Did we, does any of this language or any of these suggestions come from Google itself, themselves?
No, but we certainly referenced their HIPAA and FERPA compliance documents when we did these. It's not so much we're concerned about their security as we are with our own staff's awareness of proper sharing of information.
Yes, Ms. Healy.
I think this is a really good start. I think it needs a little review. If you want me to look at it more closely, I will. I'm just noticing, you know, we have including certain laws, but it probably should say including but not limited to these, and we-
We'd be glad to take any input.
And we say may be respons, you know, and, you know, well, some of the new people may not realize, I am a big may Shall person. Legally, may means will, or will means may, and shall means must. So, we want to be careful with that, and then maybe somebody could just, you know, look at it for making sure that it has all the words it has to. Like, it says the agreement of the student-employee not violate the confidentiality. And I'm assuming that means that the agreement of the student/employee, that they will not violate, you know, whatever. There's just a few things-
We'll have our lawyer look at it also.
Oh, well, that's even better, saved my time.
We'll take input.
I mean, I hate to spend the money, but-
Well, I meant Ms. Nelson.
On something like this, the first time we're going in, and we're going to hold, you know, staff and, you know, our students as well as their parents, because I'm assuming they're going to be involved here as well, we're going to hold them accountable. We want to make sure that we set those standards very clearly out, you know, for them to understand. Thank you.
If, as the board reviews this document further, has comments, I would suggest that you send them to our clerk, and, you know, Dr. Mira, so that any additions can be in there. I guess my follow-on question, and, Dr. Mira, this may not be yours, is how is this going to be communicated to especially the students? I know, beginning of the year, we get the pack of paper and stuff, but is there going to be any training, and maybe this is to Ms. Johnson or Mr. Nichols, especially of how that's going to be, the items in here communicated to the students? I know we can all say it's here, but-
Right, so the acceptable use policy is something that's distributed to everyone, and it's something that has to be signed off on, as Ms. Healy was saying. They have to agree to abide by the acceptable use agreement. It'll be posted on our website also.
I would just encourage, potentially at like the high school level, just a little reiteration by principals. I'm not trying to burden them with additional stuff, but in this particular media age, a constant reminder of media etiquette and such might just be useful. Dr. Benson, does that sound like something we could at least have? It's not that it changes that much, but just that reminder as we move to-
Absolutely, and particularly at the high school level, we have grade-level meetings across the division. It would certainly be appropriate for principals to include particularly things that are different about this policy with folks as they're reviewing what student responsibilities are.
I do have a question for Dr. Benson. I noticed that this says every employee contract of the division shall include compliance with the acceptable/responsible use agreement as an element of that employee contract. Now, our contracts are going to be issued before this is probably adopted, or have you? You don't have to tell me now, but-
So, one of the things that we want to focus on in moving into this, the new school year, is looking at our onboarding practices and making sure that we are doing a good job of making sure that new employees are aware of all of the things that they're responsible for, but particularly things that have changed recently. So, that'll be incorporated into what we provide as we're bringing folks onboard.
But my question is, this says that this shall be a part of the contract, but I'm assuming that we are in the process of awarding contracts now, or not awarding, but sending them out, having them signed. If this policy isn't approved before the contract is signed, how do we amend them or whatever to make it part of the contract?
The contracts refers to all laws and policies and regulations of the school division generally. There is that provision in all of our contracts.
So, when they're adopted later, they automatically? Oh, that's good.
Or amended during the course of a school year.
Okay, good.
Sounds like one of those use agreements that you scroll.
Then you can't go to get your $200 and ask your-
All right, any further? Okay, let's move on to 1302, which regards the purchase of Edgenuity. I was hoping I could say that somewhat right. I believe this is Dr. Strike. I don't know if you want to come forward. Are there any questions regarding this item?
I'd move 1302 to action.
It's been moved and seconded to move 1302 to action. Any discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there, a motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
Move to approve 1302.
It's been moved and seconded by many for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 1302, this probably is, again, Dr. Mira. Oh, it would be 130-
You're right, on who?
I got who it was. This is regarding Drew Middle School and about cabling infrastructure. Would you like to stand up and cheer?
Yeah, is this work going to be done over the summer? With all the, everything else going under, on there? It's going to be a busy little place this summer. And would it be helpful to go ahead and move this to action? Madam Chair, I'd move to move 1303 to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move thirteen oh three to action. Any discussion regarding that request or that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move thirteen oh three to, move to approve thirteen oh three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There will be new wiring. Moving on to thirteen oh four. Gosh, Dr. Mira, you are just next, next, next.
He's getting out of here. He wants to get everything done. He's got all these postnotes all over his office. He's, oh, gotta do that, gotta do that.
As you will see, it's regarding the purchase of sixteen hundred and eighty Chromebooks and seven hundred and twenty-four desktop computers.
Ooh.
These are both budgeted items. And are there any questions?
I'm going to give Dr. Mira the opportunity to tell us our cost savings on these Chromebooks as opposed to the MacBooks.
Actually, it's a value-added thing. So what we're doing here is we're doing a four-to-one replacement. So the MacBooks are all due to be replaced, or not all, but one cartload at each of the schools here that are listed. So what we've done, because as I've been telling you over the years, the online testing was the only kind of thing holding us back from going full-fledged on the Chromebooks with replacements. So for every Mac that we're replacing, or that we could replace on a one-to-one, we're replacing them with four Chromebooks. So we're netting an additional ninety student-use laptops with this purchase, which is a really good thing. All the principals agreed that they want to do that and we're able to do it because of the technology advances and Pearson's ability to let us test on the Chromebooks.
I like that little economics professor correction.
And there's a note on the agenda that is asking for it to be moved to action.
Yeah, but I did want to say thank you, Dr. Mira, for seeing this through. I know it's something that I talked about very early on in my service here of why do we keep buying these expensive MacBooks? And obviously, it's been because of the testing and thank goodness and first chance we got, we are jumping on it and our, more of our students are going to be able to utilize their own Chromebook, if you will, workstation during a day in their classroom. So that's a very good thing. My day job, isn't too excited about it, but my-
Yeah.
Again, I know we had talked about this. Dr. Mira, will we have specifications of those Chromebooks available just in the, in the case that, I hate to say, donor-
To share with the PTOs.
PTOs, donors, people who want to come in, because now you can buy, I remember what we used to spend on these Mac carts and now you can buy a hundred and twenty.
Right. We've got, we've got two standard model Chromebooks that we're able to support and they're listed and posted on our website now.
Yeah, it's going to be nice for students to have similar workstation. So one kid doesn't have a red one, the other kid has a blue one, everybody else has a black one and then everybody's fighting over one. So if it's all the same, because PTOs, PTOs are still going to supplement what we can do as a division.
Ma'am Chair, I just have a quick question. I'm all for this. This is great, wonderful. Just out of curiosity, is the replacement cycle for the Chromebooks the same?
Yes. Well, we're going to, we're going to see. We're sticking with a five-year replacement cycle and we, until we can get some empirical information or data that's our own that we could trust, we're not going to really know. But we've looked at other school divisions and up to four years so far, so good. We'll just have to see. But our metric's still going to be five years.
I'd move thirteen oh four to, move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding moving this item to act, to action? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
Move to approve thirteen oh four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion besides UFP? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go forth and purchase Chromebooks. Really, I mean, just I know what these cost as, when we were there and as a PTO president, I know Ms. Egan sat there too. It's, this is just such a great help and we'll get more of our technology into the hands of our kids. Thirteen oh five, approve proposed new policy regarding pay banding placement and pay ban to, regulation, sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Benson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school members, Dr. Benson. Tonight you have before you a proposed policy and regulation governing how employees are going to be placed on the pay ban. As you know, we have two categories of employees who are fully on the pay ban and that's maintenance and operations and technology. Partial pay banding is governing our nurses, paraprofessionals, bus drivers and bus monitors until it is able to be fully funded so that they can at least be placed at the market minimum. We have this here before you tonight because it's important that we have some guidelines governing how employees new coming in are going to be placed on the pay ban in those job classes. Generally speaking, what the regulation does is it establishes a minimum hiring range and within that range you have the market minimum and up to 20% above the minimum. And it's proposed that human resources have the authority to hire within that range. There are also years of experience associated with each marker within the generally acceptable hiring range. Superintendent would have the authority to hire up to the midpoint. Anything above the midpoint would require board approval. That reg also goes on to set forth some parameters governing how we're going to deal with pay adjustments. Those would include things like earning certificates and licenses, promotions, transfers, et cetera. It also establishes how we're going to deal with in-band salary adjustments. Those would be things such as merit pay increases that are associated with the evaluation system. And lastly, what it also does is it talks about internal equity and how we're going to deal with that. But it looks at it in a very holistic type of concept where you look at all the factors to determine whether there's going to be an adjustment because of those reasons. Any questions?
Is this fixing, I know there's a particular issue out there of a transfer from one school to another going to a higher responsible position?
Well, we dealt with that particular issue, but that really highlighted the reason why we need it to have that because since now we have all these categories of employees who are on a pay ban, we need to have some rules.
Okay.
When you have transfers or people who are coming in new to the system.
So does it help us to help you to move this along quickly as well? Are we hiring these folks as we speak?
We are constantly hiring, but I would defer to Dr. Benson on that.
I would ask, I think we're okay, Mr. Hiberns, given that it's a policy and this is really new to us as a school division, that I would ask that we allow it to go through the regular two-meeting cycle.
We let Ms. Healy really find the shells.
There are shells where they shall be.
Lauren, you can always send it to our lawyer, our paid lawyer.
Hopefully the shells are all there and the mayes are there and the wills. That are permissive.
Well, thank you very much. This is something we know that has needed to be done and as we move into these areas, keeping our HR regulations and for those coming in that we have a policy, I think is very important. So I appreciate the hard work I know that this probably took to put together. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to thirteen oh seven, no, thirteen oh six, sorry, jumping through. Discussion of current status of proposals for the eighteen, nineteen and nineteen, twenty school calendars. And I will start with Mr. Conley or Ms.-
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you bringing this up to the calendar and, you know, I wanted to just state that the reason that I wanted to have a discussion on this prior to the calendar committee presenting their information is to discuss the process. I'm not looking really to comment at all on the merit of an August thirteenth start or a September fourth start or whatever. I mean, that, I think it's premature to talk about that. So this isn't about the merits, this is about the process. And so I wanted to kind of talk a bit about that before we got too far down the line with the, with the committee and the work that you all are doing. You know, I've seen a couple of times and being on the board with the staff will do a lot of work on something and they'll get up and they'll propose it and then someone on the board will say, well, why don't we go back and do this or that? And I would think to myself, that probably would have been helpful to be brought up a month ago. So I want to avoid that and just respect for the work that's been done and for the time that's put in. And I also want to say that this, this is by no means anything directed at the staff either. You all do a fantastic job and you do, it's hard work and calendars are tricky, very tricky, as I've kind of looked into that. So, but I did want to just briefly talk about this. You know, as we know, I've heard a lot about the survey that went out a while back. And so I've had folks that have been concerned about it. You know, I was concerned about it. I do not think there was any nefarious intent whatsoever. I do not think that there was any underhanded play. I do think the survey was slanted though. I think it was probably not vetted as well as it should have been. And so I've heard a lot about that from folks. I believe it came across as slanted too. And again, I don't think the intent was there, but I do think we have a perception problem because perception is reality. And so I'm concerned moving forward with data or facts or arguments that may come out of not only this survey, but anything related to this process because I think that it is tainted. And coming out of our redistricting process where I think that we all worked so hard to be methodical and transparent and open, I think that following up with this process, it gives me pause. So that's why I just wanted to bring that up for discussion this evening. What I would like to see is maybe just pump the brakes a little bit. I knew, I know that the calendar for next year is already in play, is already made. And I know that for the following year, we need to make a decision soon. I think this is too big of an issue right now. I think that there's, there's too much baggage right now to try to push through for the following year. And I would recommend that the staff get together and put together a thought-out, methodical plan as to how to look at potentially changing the nineteen, twenty calendar with these start dates, have the merit for and against, and really let the people decide on this. I don't think that changing, I don't think that leaving the status quo in play for another year does any harm at all. I do think that changing the status quo on a rush could be very harmful. You know, I appreciate Mr. Hayes coming up and giving us some things to think about from the teacher perspective and, you know, he raised some new things that I had not even thought about yet. There are a lot of moving parts in this process. The gentleman who came up and talked about the lacrosse, he said that there's ramifications to our decisions. He's absolutely right. And I just would really hate to see us make a decision rushed on the heels of this process being somewhat tainted with, within the eyes of the constituents. So that is, you know, again, you know, I don't want to get into the merits of the start. I don't want to, you know, go any further into the survey per se. I'm happy to talk more about that if folks want to, but I don't really think it's necessary. But I did just want to raise that and say that I would like to see a plan that is longer in duration, that takes a look at the 2019, 2020 year, that takes, let's take eight months, let's take nine months, let's take ten months. Let's really get this out here. Let's really look at some things and be thorough in this. I mean, just last week, I had our homeowners association call me and say, you know that we, when the kids go back to college, we rely on high school kids to keep the swimming pool open. I hadn't even thought about that. There's a lot of things that just need to go into this. And again, I'm not saying that there's the right or the wrong answer here. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that there's a lot of things that go into this and I do think we are rushing it. So I just want to bring that up for consideration discussion.
I want to thank Mr. Conley for, you know, putting this forth because I think it is a matter that is of great interest to the community. There is no right or wrong decision here. It has been controversial as long as I've been on the board. There has been a lot of discussion about, you know, opening pre-Labor Day and as Mr. Hayes pointed out, there's, there's a lot of benefits to that, but then there's also, you know, benefits and rationale, you know, on the other side. So I would support Mr. Conley in saying, let's take our time on this. I would like to, to thank the committee and what they've done. And I think, you know, the perception is reality is unfortunately, you know, what we're faced with because I know the committee has put a lot of effort and time into this and I think Mr. Conley is saying, you know, he wants to, you know, not throw that out, but also just slow it down. What did he said? Pump the brakes. That's a great-
Yeah, pump the brakes.
That's a good expression. I'll have to remember that one. And I do understand that the committee has actually created another survey, which is, you know, somewhat, you know, or very different from the first, which is something that could be looked at, you know, also as we, as we move forward. But I, you know, I would agree that, you know, another year isn't going to make that much difference if we're going to make a significant change. I don't have a child in school right now, so, you know, there's, you know, I'm completely open. I know, you know, parents, you know, with kids in school have different reasons. You can have as many that want to start before and start after, but it is important to me that not only do we consider all these, you know, input from the academic standpoint, but I think it's important that we, we look to the community and get the input from the community. And by taking our time, I think that's going to give us, you know, an advantage. And when we do go out to the community to ask for their, you know, their input, I think it's important that they be provided the balanced picture. I think Mr. Hayes gave us a pretty good balance there. You know, these people want to do it before and these are the reasons and, you know, others want to do it after, but, but it all needs to be presented. And I think that the survey that the committee is working on is perhaps something that, you know, would be a good start, you know, in getting that out. But I do want to thank everybody and also Mr. Nichols. I think unfortunately, you, you were kind of in the crossfire there and I know that you work very hard and you've done a really good job with it. So, so thank you. But, but I would, I would support Mr. Conley in his request that we, you know, go forward with the next year, which would be actually a year from September, starting post-Labor Day, with a completely open slate on the year after. But take our time, get it out there, you know, get, get all the information and share it and then bring it to the board because it is a very important decision for a lot of people, you know, our staff, our students and our families. And, and that's what we need to be, be looking at.
Yeah, if I could just quickly follow up on that too. I had a good talk with Mr. Nichols last night and I agree. I mean, I, this is difficult. I think you're doing a very good job and I, I appreciate you, you know, hearing me out on that. That was, that was really helpful. And the point I want to make about the, the new survey is, is that I do think that whatever new survey we do, it is important that we, we, we provide context. I think that's what bothered a lot of folks is that, you know, they're asked a question of, would you like your student to be on Christmas break without homework? Well, of course. But they weren't said, but that would mean they have to come back August thirteenth and that first year of kids will lose three weeks off their summer. So there wasn't context provided. So if, if two calendars are provided for people to look at, but the context isn't there as far as saying what you're benefiting and what you're giving up, I still think that we do have that perception problem. So it's those types of things that I think we really need to think about when we do this. So, yeah.
Madam Chair, I'm going to throw a little wrench into this conversation and I apologize, but I completely disagree with all of that. I think we've already pumped the brakes by essentially pulling back the, the initial survey that we did. Committee's done all of the work already and they have all of those tidbits that they can put out there. It's all a matter of presentation. What are they, what are they putting out to the community? They have all the data. They have everything that they need. All we need to do is make sure we're giving them the time to present it to the families that have to make these decisions. Now, I've only, I've been on this board, this is my fourth year and I can tell you that this conversation comes up every year. It's a topic of discussion at PTO meetings and every other place that I've been. Parents want to know in advance, when, when's my kid going to be out of school? A year's not going to do it. I've had people say, you know, it's hard to get a rental house in the Outer Banks. Sometimes we have to book it two years in advance. They want it, they want that information. They need to know it and they want to know it right away. So my opinion, I wouldn't support delaying this. I would, I want to give the committee a chance to put all the information together, bring it to us and after we've heard what they have to say and then make a decision. I just don't think, I think doing it now and saying, let's just put it off and there's no reason to put it off. I say, let's listen to what the committee has to say and we make a decision then. It's my 10 cents.
I think the concern that I have with that, and I thought about that, the concern I have is, is that the data now being used is tainted. I think that there is a perception out there, whether it's true or not, that this survey was designed with an outcome in mind and that there is a desired outcome coming forward by the administration and that any survey presented in the near future, without this getting in the rearview mirror, is going to be viewed as tainted because there is a clear objective coming out. So whatever it might be, whether it be data from a survey, whether it be data saying that how much this is going to cost because we have to heat the building or cool the buildings, anything like that, I just, I feel is tainted. I'm just concerned that it's going to be looked at as, as a bum rush.
But the data is data. It's tainted if, if it's not accurate and you're, you're skewing whatever it is. This is not a-
But you have to be able to trust the source of the data.
Okay.
And I think that trust is lost with this survey.
Yeah, that's, whatever the data they have is going, is going to be the same data that they're going to bring in. So I guess what I'll suggest is, Mr. Nichols- to bring in. So I guess what I'll suggest is, Mr. Nichols, if you have, I'm assuming that there are some of the districts that are not represented yet on the committee, can you send me a list of those districts, and I'll put out a call to action to some of our parents? I know I lost one who served. Some of these calendar committee people have been sitting on it for 10, 15 years. If we can fill those empty district seats with parent volunteers, that might help to eliminate, you know, it puts new blood in there, fresh ideas. That might help eliminate that tainted concern that you have. So if you could send that to me at your earliest convenience, I'll put something out there, and I'll ask Sheree if she can actually, you know, do something on the website also to try and fill those seats. Maybe that'll help.
Mr. McCosker?
Is there a motion to move? I have, I moved the, is there a motion on the table to move this to 19 to 20 start date?
Not, I don't think yet. I think there's still discussion. I thought we were still in discussion, so.
Yeah.
Before we do that, I'd actually, you know, this is all about transparency. The problem that crept up was, yeah, it wasn't as transparent a process as it could be. I would like to know, or get Mr. Nichols or Dr. Benson to give us the thumbnail of what is the current status of the calendar committee and their proposed action or their expected action to come through within the next
Timeline.
period of time, whatever the timeline is. So we have the data that's accurate of what's actually going on here.
Yes, sir. Based on what we had, what Mr. Conley talked about with the first survey, you know, again, it wasn't on our intention to sway anything. We were asking specific questions based that we wanted to find the answer, the importance of different topics. We met after that, and after seeing all the feedback, and we talked about that. At this point, we were going to develop, we have developed two proposals, a pre and a post-Labor Day calendar. And we were going to send those out to our families in direct email, so no one else can take the survey except for the family on the email that we have in our system. Also, sending the same survey out to our staff, our internal email, for them to give their opinions, but basically ask and identify a question of who you are, as far as where do you have your children, or what level you're at, as far as the staff, and then give them options A and B, and basically just key considerations or facts based on each calendar. The pre would start August 13th. It would end May 30th. The post would start September 4th and end June, and I can't remember the exact date. But we would just give facts. The first semester would end on the 20th of December, and the other calendar would end the 21st of January. So we would just be very factual in what we presented.
Can you also help me understand what's been going on with the calendar committee? Now, it's a committee of the superintendents, so there's not minutes taken at these calendar committee meetings, correct?
No. We have 18 members. We have a parent, we have five representatives from the school board, the districts. We have two, we're missing one from Quay and also from George Washington District. We have an administrator representative from each level, high school, middle school, and elementary level. We have a teacher from each of the levels, high school, middle, and elementary. And we also have a parent/teacher. And we also have two staff members representing. We also have a representative from HR, and then we have my counterpart for the elementary chief, secondary or elementary officer. And that composed the committee.
If we do end up kind of reconveniencing or, you know, pushing it forward, pump the brakes, if you will, can I suggest also adding a member from the communications office, or teaching communications office?
Actually, Ms. Johnson is on the committee.
Oh, you're already, good.
Sorry.
But, Madam Chair, I'd like to, and I'm not going to, I don't want to talk to you, Mr. Nichols. I'm not going to say. I would just say.
Okay, well, I'm not finished.
Are you not? Okay, sorry.
So they did the survey. Now, it is the committee that has developed the two calendars that are potentially going to be brought forward or surveyed.
Yeah, within our committee meeting, we, majority ruled in the committee, and we had, one, we talked about the merits of a pre-Labor Day start based on looking at the calendar from instructional lens. How do we improve the calendar that will benefit our students instructionally? So that was the lens that we started with versus just producing a traditional calendar. We tried to look at it through a different lens. Hence, I was leading that up versus the HR department. Traditionally, they looked at it from the calendar. With that, we developed and we talked about the merits. We liked what we saw from another county that they did, and some of the questions they asked, because it does give some relevance. Response to the homework, you know, that not only does it say, yes, it'd be nice, but it also provides us information that if we need to look at revamping or addressing our homework policy. So it provided information in that regard. But we've sat together, we have developed a pre and a post-Labor Day calendar that we would like to present out there and get feedback. And that was our next step.
Dr. Benson, I have a question for you. Since you've been here, things like this have always been done in a very projectized manner. You've had a charter, and typically a schedule and communications plan. Was there anything done for the calendar development and the calendar committee in this instance, or in this time period?
There was no project charter associated with it. The big shift was to move it out of HR and into the instructional side of the house. And then to take a look at other changes that were going on in the region, because we do have some other divisions in the area that appear to be headed in this direction. I don't think there was any intent. I appreciate Mr. Conley speaking to that, to try and get to a particular solution. The original survey was to determine whether or not there was interest to pursue another option than what we have done traditionally. And I think where the committee is right now, if the board should choose to move forward, asking folks, when they have an opportunity to look at what two options would look like, would give us an opportunity to collect some additional information to inform what direction the board might want to head, whether it's next year or the year after that.
I think that's been my kind of struggle with is just the process. It didn't start off as a very good process from the beginning. You know, we've always had this calendar committee. We tried to really just shift. And I think in retrospect, looking back, we probably all agreed, probably would have been better to do it in a more methodology that we've done other things, and a good project schedule or a good schedule, a good committee/committee structure was there, but just something missing there. And for us, you know, from my perspective, from I heard from parents, was just the transparency of the whole thing. And that survey obviously made it appear very non-transparent. So that's just my perspective given to you if you have to go back and do it all over again.
Can I ask, do you have bus drivers?
May I, may I go, Mr. Conley?
Go ahead. I'll yield, but I haven't had comments yet. But go ahead. I'll yield.
Okay.
Do you have bus drivers on the committee?
No, sir.
You don't have bus drivers? Okay.
I was getting there.
No, thank you very much. So, yeah, I've heard about this committee from Jump Street. So I guess, you know, I guess that is, the process foul, to me also, is, you know, maybe the lack of transparency on the committee. And I know the board, I know I didn't know about it until a committee member briefed me, back-briefed me on the process, and what was going on in the meetings. Not taking minutes, just like we do on most of our committees, that's kind of a process foul, I think. I think when you take minutes, you register, you know, the pros and cons of issues on both sides of the issue. And this is a contentious issue. Let's not make it like it's not. And as we've seen from our constituents. So that was one thing that gave me issue. And then you said there's five parent representatives on the committee. Is that correct? And how many school employees are on the committee?
We followed the policy for calendar, in which employees you would have six, you would have 13 that are on.
Thirteen, so 13 school employees and five parent. And how many parents showed up to the committees generally?
We started out with five, went to four.
Went to four, so four or five. So I think Ms. Egan's point about getting some more folks, you know, maybe I'll beat my district up, too, and get a person in there, too, as well, you know, as this moves forward. You know, the survey that was launched out was, correct me if I'm wrong, was it the same exact survey as Spotsylvania?
Very similar, but it was not.
So it was very similar. Was there little changes or a lot of changes?
There were changes based on wording and how we.
Based on wording. And so that happened a couple of years ago, and that's the county to our south, of course. And they had, I know the constituents in that division were very, they were kind of surprised when this same survey came out to them, and the board approved this early start. And I think, Madam, I'll yield to Ms. Healy.
I just wanted to tell you, this is ironic, because at one point in the past, Spotsy started pre-Labor Day, and they switched back to post-Labor Day. And now, if I can read in the papers correctly, they're looking at pre-Labor Day. So they flip-flopped, whereas we have, you know, stayed the same. Not that we should always stay the same, but it's just, probably because of what you're talking about on that survey. But they did start pre, and then pretty soon after, they.
That's a good point, Mrs. Healy. Yes. That's what I understood, too, but I forgot about that. So anyway, I mean, I think, you know, I think we do need to relook at the process, you know, maybe initially coming out with some sort of charter, laying down the costs and benefits besides just going straight to the constituents. Because I think on some hot-button issues, like redistricting, like calendar, and like some other things, we go straight to the constituents with a survey without the board being aware of it. That can cause, that can cause a non-synchronization with our constituents and with us. So not only are we surprised about, hey, what was sent out by the school division, the constituents are surprised, and they're calling us up, and they're going, hey, what's going on with this? Even though the intent, you know, there's intent versus impact. So the intent wasn't to steer surprise, desynchronize the board members and constituents, but the impact was exactly that. So that's also a concern. So, I mean, I am in favor of kind of pumping the brakes, as Mr. Conley said, looking at a decision for 1920 instead of 1819, kind of take, bringing it back to Dr. Benson and relooking a sort of a, how, relook at some of these concerns that I think the board members mentioned and our constituents mentioned to us. But to keep, of course, we're going to keep that, like Mr. Conley and so many of us set up here. We're going to keep that, we'll keep the momentum going, but we'll just kind of pump the brakes and go for a 1920 decision cycle on the calendar. So that's what I'm in favor of. And as soon as the committee members have finished their comments, I would expect a motion.
All right. Ms. DeCater, do you have any comments? All right. At this point, I feel like it's premature for us to make a decision. I would like to hear what the committee has to say. I think there's been a lot of work done. I would actually like to see what's done. I hear the board saying, we want to make sure people know. Well, people know about this going on. I would still like to see the data that comes in, and if we look at it and we make a decision, seeing that we still think that there are major problems or that there aren't. I think that we have to allow that information to come to us. What I keep hearing is, we would like eight months to continue to look at this issue. I will tell you, when we had redistricting come and people said it's a short timeline, people are engaged over a short period. I believe that we need to continue with this process. That does not mean I'm going to vote for or against. But right now, I don't even have the facts. I have a major question that I would like the committee to look at. I know our neighboring jurisdictions have gone, many of them, for a 1819 start. We have regional programs that start, they would be starting three weeks early. Commonwealth Governor's School, I know, is one of them. How are we going to say to our kids, half-day, you're here, when other school districts are starting two and a half weeks earlier than we are? I don't want to disadvantage our kids that way. I don't know how that works, and I don't want an answer tonight. But that is of concern to me, of how are we going to allow those kids? We can't let them out early because it's a half-day program. So I just have some concerns about how we're going to be offering those kinds of programs in a differing environment. And it may only impact that program, but there may be others. So I would ask the committee, and like I said, I don't know how, you know, what's going to happen tonight. I still would like a committee report. I'd like to chew on the information you all have brought forward on the 13th, was what I believe was the date it was coming. I still believe this board needs to hear that information. I believe that the public needs to hear that information. I believe then that night, we should make potentially a decision based on data. At this point, I don't want to make a premature decision either way until we've had at least the committee work brought to us. That doesn't mean we can't reconvene it and say, we still want more information. But at this point, if the intent was to bring us something on the 13th, I personally would like to hear what the work is. But those are just my comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. DeCater.
So on the 13th, they were.
Your mic on. Your mic.
Test.
Give you credit.
On the 13th, they are bringing.
I would ask.
On the 13th, was the idea that you would be bringing information, is that for information as far as our.
I think it's a report of the committee.
Yes, we were going to provide you the information based on our committee, to give you information based on what we looked at.
Okay. Yeah, I would definitely agree then with.
I'd like to at least hear it, is where I am.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't, to Mr. McCosker's point, go down that road while still looking at this information. But we're going to be looking at information that is going to become, it's going to be coming out of this challenging period that we just had. So, I mean, at least from my perspective, I cannot put any credence in what I will be shown on the 13th, because it is coming out of at least a perception that there was an objective that was sought to be found. So in any kind of study, that data would not be considered valid data. And that's my concern, is that we're going to be looking, to make this thing, to try to make this fit, because to Ms. Egan's point, people are already planning. So the calendar for next year's in play is already done. So people are needing to be making their decisions on what they're going to be doing a year ahead of time. So we would need to rush and get a vote this summer, based on data that everyone has an issue with. And I'm just not saying the survey. I'm saying anything that follows that survey, because again, the perception of this objective of wanting an outcome is still there. I mean, we didn't even have bus drivers on this committee. We're asking these folks on August 13th to get in a bus and spend a whole day in a bus, all day. That hasn't even been addressed on this committee. But yet, we want to look at this data to help make a decision. I just, I don't know. I see a perfect storm coming that I don't want to be caught in. And I was reading some of the Spotsylvania stories of a few years ago, and I don't know. I just think we're just walking right into the same thing they did. For what? For what? To, there's nothing wrong with keeping the status quo for another year, to be able to say to the community, we truly gave this 100% transparent effort. That's just my.
Okay. I mean, like I said, I've stated my position I'd like to hear on the 13th, so.
Right. I just have a question about this new survey. When was it planned to go out? And, you know, who put it together? You know, who's going to be reviewing it? I mean, there's not much time between now and the 13th of June. So families are so busy with end-of-the-year activities. Our staff is really busy with end-of-the-year activities. We're all busy with end-of-year activities. I'm not sure what kind of response we can expect, you know, to a survey that's sent out, you know, the last two weeks of school. Then somehow, the data's going to be analyzed and brought to us to make a really critical decision about, you know, a significant change, you know, for everyone here. And just because I've been on the board the longest, and I voted, you know, in the past for this, you know, post-Labor Day, doesn't mean I'm not open to pre-Labor Day. I mean, I want to hear, you know, the pros, the cons. I want to hear from the community. And I think Mr. Conley has really, you know, made a, you know, a good argument for. a, a good argument for putting the brakes on and doing it completely in the open, taking some time, making a decision, you know, soon about next year, meaning that 18, would be the 1819 year. It's so hard to think of these, these outgoing years as, as soon. But I agree with Ms. Egan, you know, people are making their plans for next summer, not this summer, next summer, you know, when they're going to rent those beach houses and, you know, when they're going to be cheaper. And actually, that's one of the arguments people made about starting after Labor Day because the beach houses were cheaper those last couple of weeks in August. But that's, that's, that's an aside. But I, I don't understand how this is all going to get done within the next two weeks to bring us something that, you know, we're going to make this really significant decision on.
Madam Chair. Okay. Just, no, I just wanted one question. So are you bringing it for information? Are you, is that what you're going to ask?
No, I just asked that.
Or are you going to bring, are you bringing it as a staff study?
It'll come to you as information based on our committee's work.
So it's coming to this board, okay, got it. So it's coming to this board for pre-decisional information.
However, that is.
Next.
That is up to the chair and vice chair in our agenda meeting, that that may not be how it would be brought.
Oh, okay. I was just, I was just asked, I just got the question answered, so.
I mean, I believe.
You guys haven't set the agenda yet, of course.
Right. And, you know.
But that was the intent.
My, well, I, I guess that's what the intent was. In the past, that's how the calendar committee has done it. I'm not certain that's how it would be done this time.
Okay.
Would be my comment.
Okay, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sitting here relatively quiet because I'm kind of playing both sides of, I mean, I'm understanding both sides of this argument here. And in order to kind of bring it to a closure, I'm wondering if we could just kind of agree to disagree for this evening. And I'm wondering if we could bring it for information on the 13th. And at that point, if we're not satisfied with the information we've heard, I understand what you're saying about the legitimacy of the, the surveys and all of that, maybe give them some time to get this second survey out, see what kind of response they do get, if any. And then I, again, I, I'm, I'm kind of with Mr. Connolly on this and that I would be very comfortable with moving this to the next school year. But, but at the same time, I, I really do want to hear the work that the committee has done. I, you know, I, could we kind of agree to maybe push it to the 13th?
My thought, again, like I said, I would like to hear what would come, but I do believe it would be a report to the board. I have always felt that.
So I heard, no, right, right.
Just like we're doing right now, you're making a motion to put this off to the 1920. Can we, you know, at that point, if we're not satisfied with what we've heard, at that point, then, you know, I would, I would be very comfortable with, you know, putting it off to the next school year.
And, and Ms. Decatur, I did hear your question about information. I just wanted to make sure that I understood it was not a stat, not a staff study coming to the board.
Because I don't know a lot of terminology yet.
But it, but it, but it information. So I wanted to make sure I knew, because that, that is setting up a decision of this board, so.
Which is how it's been done in the past.
And which is how it's been done in the past, to be, to be fair. Right, right. However, I, so I would suggest that a.
Report.
I would suggest if, if we don't move it tonight, I would suggest a report. But that, I'll, I'm going to let Mr. Connolly lead on that.
What is the purpose of the report?
The report from a committee.
But what's the purpose of the report? When we get the report in two weeks, what is, what is?
We always have to have a committee, because right now, I haven't come up with any individual calendar for next year. We have to have something brought forward to us.
Our working, our working objective here, the seven of us, as we talk about this issue, what, what, what is the purpose of this report? What will this report do to help us further along, make a decision? I guess I don't understand. So we're going to have.
We don't have a calendar right now.
But we're going to have data coming back from a flawed survey and two calendars that are going to be emailed to parents. And so we're going to take that and we're going to see it. And from there, how does that move us any further to make a decision?
I think we have to look at, at calendars, because otherwise, we will be meeting as a committee and we will be coming up with a calendar, because we don't have one. We need to look, I mean, every year, the calendar committee comes and presents us a document or a couple documents, and we make some decision about going forward. I would like that committee work to come to us, because otherwise, we will be getting together and creating a calendar from scratch.
Madam Chair, if I could real quick.
I don't understand why we would do that.
Can I just? We do, we've been doing this often lately. We, we ask parents to come in and give their time, serve on these committees, and then we disregard their recommendations, their suggestions to us. And now we're telling them, we just don't want to hear you right now. So that's the problem I have. I, I want to apologize to anybody who's sitting on the calendar committee who thinks that their, you know, their time has been wasted. I want to apologize myself. That's not the intent. We've got, we've got to start respecting the people who are serving their time with us.
Well, we've had, it looks like we had five parents, 13 staff, five parents. Of those five, I heard from two. Actually, I heard from three.
So have I.
That were very upset with this process. I mean, one of the reasons I'm being so vocal on this is because of the parents.
On the committee.
Who are on the actual committee.
So we've, we're hearing from the committee members of the community, Ms. Egan, and how upset they are about this process. I just wanted to make sure. And now it's out.
I'm, I'm hearing from my constituents. That's where, that's where my frustration's coming from. They want the calendars put out in an ample time to make plans. And I've also heard from my constituents who have been completely ignored when they've come to this board with recommendations and suggestions. That's all I'm saying.
I, I think that's why we're proposing that we look at the 2019, 2020 year as the year that we do this. We put, the next year's calendar is already there. We put the next year's calendar in for consistency and really focus on 1920 with a well-thought-out, methodical plan. I, we can still hear from the, I, I was going to suggest that, that this, this survey go out.
Yeah.
This survey goes out and, and instead of two weeks to hear from it, let's hear from it, let's hear, let's hear about it towards the mid, end of the summer as part of the way to have a longer look at 2019, 2020. I mean, I'm not saying toss this out at all.
Chris, we would still need something to adopt for.
Right, right, right. But I'm, but I'm suggesting.
And, and there, there's actually quite a bit of work that goes into, to decide which holidays we recognize per year, when workdays fall, when exams fall, et cetera. So there is still, even, even if we propose to, or, you know, if a motion ends up coming to fruition of, you know, 1819, you know, keep the traditional.
Sure.
Post-Labor Day start, there's still quite a bit of work that is probably going to fall on Tom's shoulders.
I understand. I'm just suggesting.
Give us something.
The element that's contentious, I think if we remove that contentious element until the 2019, 2020, that's just my opinion.
Madam Chairman, it sounds like the committee does have a calendar that is post-Labor Day as well as one that's pre-Labor Day. So there, there wouldn't be any reason not to, to look at that. I, I agree with Ms. Decatur. Why don't we just have a report, have, have a report come in, but not for information? I mean, I don't, I don't want to insult somebody. And maybe you can help it if you don't agree, but I, I like, you know, agreeing to disagree.
I mean, with a staff report.
I, I, I think we're in, in a different position from the committee or the committee member, because we represent, you know, our communities. I mean, we also, you know, need to do what's, you know, in the interest of the school system. And it, and it's a balance. And it's, it's something we're going to have to deal with. And, and by coming forward to us, you know, with, with all of the information, with the transparency, with the pros and cons, you know, with some of the information Mr. Hayes gave us. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, there's just as many arguments for as against. But ultimately, you know, we do need to address it. But I don't want to have to address it in two weeks to make a significant change, you know, with, with data that is certainly going to be perceived as flawed. I, I, I know, at the end of the school year, there is so little time. I, I can't think of a worse time, other than perhaps the holiday break to, to send out a survey, you know, and expect everyone to, you know, have the time, you know, to put into it. So, I, but, but I have no objection at all to it coming back. But I think the board needs to make a decision next month. You know, by, certainly by the end of June, we need to make a decision about the calendar year, you know, for 1819, in, in fairness to, to the community and to our staff as well.
Madam Chair, this, this doesn't change anything. They were already planning to bring it for information on the 13th. So as of now, we haven't changed anything. We haven't postponed anything. We haven't delayed anything right now. We've, we've really brought this to information sooner than we should have, because there's, you know, issues going on, really via Facebook, that I've seen with people upset that there isn't a calendar and people upset that they received a survey that was skewed. So, you know, I think putting it off till the 13th and, and hearing what the committee has done, again, it's not changing anything.
Yes.
I'd move to the, at the school board director superintendent, put on the count, the agenda for the June 13th school board meeting, a staff report on the calendar committee.
Committee report.
With any information, with committee report of the calendar committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll roll with that.
All right. Any discussion? All right. I think we discussed. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Nichols, I think my question that I directed to you would, if there are, if the committee could address that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would, will it, I guess, a point of order, will, that being as a staff report, put us in a posture to enable a motion, if a motion is necessary, to direct staff to redirect the calendar committee for 1920?
I think upon that, we can put, we can create, when we go into agenda review, we can look at potential ways to have that open on our, on our, on our agenda to, to deal with that. I'm sure this committee, I'm sure this board knows, we will be having several meetings and we may be adding meetings in June anyway, because of some pressing issues as we get towards the end of the year, and also personnel evaluation that we have to complete before July 1. Of course, having June 13th be almost the latest we can go for our second meeting in June, it does somewhat handicap us. But I think when we reconvene on the 13th, if there are, Dr. Benson, I think I, one of us, probably me, interrupted you. I think you had a comment.
Well, I was just going to add that, that, you know, the calendar committee, from what I understand, will be bringing two viable calendars to the board for FY 19. So one would be a traditional post-Labor Day start, the other would be a pre-Labor Day start. The board could look at the merits of those two calendars and decide which one of those options to advance. And, and then we, we still are doing that work to develop, to move toward a, a calendar eventually that, that the board would adopt.
Yeah, okay.
Could I, am I allowed to ask another question?
Sure. You can always ask. I might not have the answer.
Is there a reason why?
Is there a reason why there is not a school board member on this committee? Because I know that I heard from a few of us that it was a little frustrating that we didn't hear that these things were going out or, or whatever the case may be, so that we could inform our constituents. So you look like you've got an, no, not volunteering. My husband will maybe divorce me.
I think there is, there are some committees that board members, it's important to be on. And I think there's some that traditionally they haven't. I mean, I'm telling you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that I want to be on this one. But I, I'm not sure if that's where this committee, maybe that's something we can talk about in our governance committee. Because there is something about certain committees, when board members sit on them, it can change how the, the discussion goes.
Especially if it's one over all seven.
And, and I would argue that it's too top-heavy now. I would like to see, I would like to see personally more community folks serving on it as opposed to more staff members. But that's my, that's my opinion.
There's probably some of each because of, you know, work that has to be done. So, you know, we, I think we have to be also cognizant. Okay. Is there any more comment on this issue?
This is just a question, I promise. You had asked Ms. Hazard for information regarding how it would affect some of the. Yeah, any of the regional programs. So does this mean that, is this the time where we ask for specific data on the merits of the different starts? Because that's kind of what that is. So, I mean.
It was the one thing I hadn't heard, so I just asked.
I think that the staff will be able to bring us that information, because a few years ago, when Spotsy did go to pre-Labor Day, they started the middle of August. And actually, we made accommodations in our high schools for our covenant, with Governor's School students to start school early, so that they didn't miss anything. I, I remember that. And they, they certainly, you know, weren't complaining about it.
Yeah, I've, I've heard Noah now, the new gifted supervisor, she, she's Governor's School. I've, I've heard, I've heard no issues with Governor's School start. It's good to hear Governor's School come up in conversation now and then from board members. Thank you, Mrs. I don't know about this position, but I heard there was absolutely no issue with Governor's School and.
It's more if there's, if there's some involved in sports and stuff, we, I just want to make sure we aren't.
A comment on that.
You know, if we aren't.
But if we're going to give, if we're going to be given two calendars to vote on, I mean, there's issues like cost for the school. There, there, there's all kinds of different things. I mean, is this the time now that we ask to find that out? Or do you, am I making sense? As far as all the different, I guess the things that I've been saying, we should take eight months to really think about. Now we're condensing into two weeks. So.
I mean, so there needs to be a, there needs to be a full analysis. If you're going to come back to the board for a decision, I would expect the full analysis on.
But that, that's what we should expect from the committee report. And if it's not there, which it sounds like the information, that data may not be there.
Yes.
You know, then that's our decision point.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked that specific question, but that's one that came up to me from a constituent asked me. So I brought it up.
Has it been addressed before?
Okay. I just, you know, it was, it was a question asked to me, but if, if, you know, if the committee feels that that's information, we need to know. I just, sorry. But, all right. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing nobody leaping over to, to move. All right. Moving on to.
Sorry, everybody.
No, 1307. This is a proposed resolution regarding the calculation of design capacity for our elementary schools. I'm going to take the first crack at this one. I think what we have learned over the last year that we are growing, we are growing with regard, with regards to our types of programs, things that we offer, how we use our buildings, when we even designed Moncur, we started to look at some of these things. We have 17 elementary schools and one at Head Start, and one Head Start building, so I'd say 18 buildings, that we support 24 pre-K programs. And we support 62 special education or highly specialized education programs that need full-time rooms. Then we have 57 programs that are pullout programs. Dr. Clark, I do have a question. Do you know if the focus numbers are included in this? Or is this only, okay. So we don't even accommodate, at least in here, something regarding any specific pullout rooms for focus or other activities. I know this board has heard me say it, and I'm sorry, I'm going to keep saying it. We want to have a class size reduction program initiative that we did very well with last year. But to maintain it with this growth and these programs is very concerning to me. The proposal that I have in, that we have put in there is, we really need to say that each building, based on these types of numbers, there's going to be at least, I think it's at least four, but I was nice and said three to four, programs that are going to only have somewhere between six and eight kids in every room. And our design capacity or our capacity, I'm not even sure we should call it design capacity, should just be capacity of our buildings, needs to reflect that, which means that there will be a, a reduction of about 5% in each of our buildings, to really say that that's what we are, that's what we're doing in our buildings. I think this came up in our Falmouth look at the programs and comparing real numbers and how we use our building. We need to really, I think, start to look at that. We may now be, you know, looking now at two years in the future, that we may be doing elementary redistricting depending on our Moncur. I am very concerned. Moncur right now is at 102% capacity. And I know Ms. Healy has always kindly said, we'll take them at Rock Hill. Well, looking at next year.
And, and Garrisonville.
And Garrisonville. Right now, we have eight to nine potential highly specialized education programs moving there. But then when you look at their numbers, if you look at their rooms and you use those right numbers, that those classrooms can only have six to eight kids, we're at like 90%. Where are we going to be moving kids? And I think we need to really look at that. This resolution, I know, I'm not speaking for Mr. Hirons, but in the past, this hasn't been a popular way for this board to move forward. But if we do not. been a popular way for this board to move forward, but if we do not start to look at capacity accurately and start to reflect that, we were at a meeting last night, I sat, or, yeah, with Ms. Egan, and we were told how crappy, basically, our data was, and that we don't, you know, that we, there's not really growth. Folks, we are growing, and if we don't though start looking at that capacity, capacity differently, and for next school year, when we run the stoplight chart, we need to be looking at real capacity and not this design capacity, because it shows many more seats than there are, and I am very fearful that we are running out of room. I don't know if there's something that we want to discuss, or.
Yeah, I'd just like to, unless.
Oh, Mr. Hirons.
Did Mr. Hirons, okay. No, so I've read the document, I like, I like the idea, the document. You know, that's, that's always been the case, where we, we, you know, Mr. Hiran and his folks, you know, they, they set up a design capacity so they can get the funding stream, they can get the square footage per student and the funding, and so, so that's, that's the design capacity. But whenever we talked about redistricting and, and, and real capacity, if you will, on a building, it's always been program capacity. And so I do think that we need to identify buildings using program capacity. However.
Just capacity.
Well, or we can say just capacity, and come up with some template that says, you know, an elementary school is nine fifty and five percent is of the rooms will not, you know, whatever, you know, because many of these things that you say in here, and with Dr. Clark, you know, his input, and, but I would like to see kind of a template on, you know, if it's nine fifty and this is what, minus five percent, more of the, more of the data laid out in a, in a template.
And Mr. McCosker, I would be willing to, if you wanted to amend that, to add a focus or some kind of.
Yeah, because I think there's.
Kind of room, if that was a need going on for all of our classes, for all of our schools.
I think there's different, yeah, no, no, I, I agree, I think there's different, there's different programs that are very, very, you know, they're, they're very needed in this community, and, and so we, we need to build those into the, to the schools, and not give a false, not, not give a false number to, when you do look at the chicklet chart, you know, you look at Falmouth and it says, or Rock Hill, or Ferry Farm, or, well, but Rock Hill, and, and you see these, oh, it has two hundred students, well, we know very well, Rock Hill can't take that many, and we know very well that, that Falmouth couldn't take the, the amount of students based on, anyway. So I'm going to read it over and take a good look. If you'd let me just, just let me get a stab at it, and then I'll make the coordinations where, I'll just say, I think we should coordinate with, you know, engineering, special education, gifted, and send it back to you.
Ms. Healy, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman, I, I think this is a good thing to look at, but I agree with Mr. McCosker, that, that what I would like to look at is program capacity, but not just in an individual school, across the school system, because we do have control to a certain extent on where we fit programs. I mean, ideally, we wouldn't move them once they're in a school, but unfortunately, we found that we've had to move programs, and it's because of, of the rooms. Now, over the, the past years, I think we've done a better job, and Mr. Hiran can probably, you know, say this is correct or not, but on, on the design of our, our newer elementary schools, they, it certainly was the intention that they have flexibility to, to accommodate a smaller group, I know we have some partitions in some places, but, so that, recognizing that we are going to increasingly have a need for a, a group of, you know, under ten students, perhaps even under five, that don't need a room that's big enough for twenty-five students. And I know that's certainly in effect in Moncur, and I thought that's what we were doing in the past few schools. Maybe, maybe not, but, you know, we'll find out. But, but I, I think we need to, in addition to looking at, you know, a snapshot of where we are in particular schools, I, I think we need to look at as a system, and how many, you know, students do we have with these needs, and how many rooms do we need for these students? Because, you know, it is going to be a floating number, it's not going to be concrete per school, because of the nature of the programs, you know, we don't have the programs in each school, so we do have some flexibility, you know, in it, but it, we certainly need to show that we don't have a capacity of the total number of classrooms times twenty-five. You know, that, that's absolutely clear.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to remind everybody about, oh, gosh, ten, twelve years ago, when we were walking into our schools, there was art in the cart, and there was, I mean, we were doing art, we did art on the stage at Stafford Elementary School when, when my kids first, first got there. So, I don't think it would hurt to keep the program capacity, and I've always thought this, that this is the way it should have been, and I understand why we went to design capacities, so we could be consistent across the board, but given all of the challenges that we have with all the preschool classes coming in, and the misunderstanding from some of our funding body members about how this works, it might behoove us to go back to the, where we had program capacity and design capacity, so that you can get a real picture of, okay, this is, this is what we are physically able to put into all the classrooms, and then for others who like to see a realistic picture, they can look at the program. So my vote would be to reinstitute both of them.
I think, though, we have to decide as a board, when we get to September, when we run the green light, stoplight chart, whatever we call it, what are we running it on? If we're running it on nine hundred and fifty students, and we know we can only put nine hundred and ten in there, we aren't telling the right story. And that's what this document is designed for us to say, what is the story we're telling, especially in a growth time in our community, and we're looking at a joint CIP process regarding capacity? We've got to deal with it before we know what we're going to go advocate. So this is, to get this topic talking, I would like to bring it, again, I do know we will need Mr. Hiran's office, I know, on this, but it does seem like, I mean, Mr. Hiran, if you want to come forward, do you agree that we need to be looking at this differently?
Yes, Mr. Hiran, come forward.
Sorry. I know. You thought you could get out.
He, he was sleeping until about two, no, he wasn't.
I mean, because right now, with Dr. Clark, while you're coming up, I mean, we have some schools, you know, that have seven of these programs, and the lowest, we have one. So there, these programs at least are in every school minimally, and then from my perspective, there's also these mandated pull-out spaces that we need to be using. Maybe they don't need the one with the bathroom, but, you know, we're using these spaces, and I'm just concerned that, you know.
I think I agree with many, much of what many of you have talked about tonight. I think from a deliberate planning perspective, when we design a building, we do allocate certain spaces, certain classrooms for special ed programs, and those, those types, in general purpose, and we've been counting those in the design capacity. What's happening is, once we establish that, we have, we have significant changes in any given year. Some of those changes are what I call deliberate or long-term changes, they're not something that just occurs for one season, for one school year. And so they're deliberate changes that we as a board, or you as a board, should consider changing from a deliberate planning perspective. And so that nine hundred and fifty elementary school that has four spaces for, that's already been counted for special ed, now we've just added three pre-K programs, so that's going to bring that capacity down. And if you as a board are considering now that we're getting more and more of these pre-K programs and other special ed programs that were above and beyond what the buildings, what our buildings have been designed for, if you feel that those are becoming more static and more deliberate, and not as easy to be moved around the division, then yes, you should consider changing and looking at the design capacity differently. And so that could change from year to year as programs are entered. Now, the one thing we used to do, and we still do from a program perspective, in any given year, a school might be using a room for something that is not supporting a program. And so the numbers, that's where it got kind of tricky, the numbers, when you looked at a classroom that was being used for, just because it was empty, the school was, you know, had that capability, and it wasn't used to support an ESL program or a pre-K program, it was just there, we counted it as a non-classroom space, and so it skewed the numbers a little bit from a program to design capacity. So I would support, and certainly, I, I'm in favor of re-looking at the design capacities so that they are realistic, so that we give you actual good, hard data, when you're making decisions for either redistricting or where to put a program, that you can see what really can go into that building. Because obviously, you saw some of the challenges we had when we were talking about Falmouth and those schools, so I think, does that help?
So, so really quick, maybe that's the capacity term, maybe you'd forget the design, of course, we're going to, we're still going to have to have a costing mechanism, and that's Mr. Hiran, but yeah, come up with, come up with a board agreed capacity per elementary, like Mrs. Healy said, and then maybe middle and high.
I started with elementary, because I thought that was the best place to start.
My question is, with elementary in particular, it always seems these pre-K in particular are kind of, sometimes they're counted in, sometimes they're not. Why aren't we counting pre-K students as the consumption level of that capacity?
We should. And, and we do carry it on the chart, we have it as a separate column, if you recall.
It seems to kind of float up there, though.
I agree. I would, I would certainly not argue that point with you. I think that's, it needs to be addressed.
Pre-Ks here, I mean.
That's right.
We may as well consider, you know, we talk, we talk a lot about K through five and six, seven, eight. It's pre-K through five is what we need to look at these elementary schools at, period.
If we, as a group, and you as a board, recognize the fact that on any given year, the number, the capacity of the facility could change, that we look at from a static or deliberate planning perspective, then I think we're good, I think we're good. Because as Dr. Clark and her colleagues decide to open a new pre-K or new special ed or some other program that utilizes a space based on DOE guidance, that this space now should be considered for only eight students versus twenty-four because of the program, then we, we manipulate, and others need to understand that, that design capacity, last year was, just to say, ten thousand for elementary school, now it's nine hundred and twenty because we added these programs and it brought us down. I don't see us going the other way, unfortunately. I see just these new programs that are more demanding on the school division and our facilities, just increasing based on the trends that we see. So, so as long as we understand that, and, and we all are focused and using that common database each year, that we know that it could change, then I think, I think it'll be fine.
I think, just a final point, but not to cut anybody off, the other thing is, though, is when we look at that design capacity, we may have assumed, well, that will assume there are five first grades. Ms. Healy represents a school, Margaret Brent, that has seven, and then we add pre-K on top of that and take them out. We also have to look at our assumptions, that to me goes to also, we don't want to have, we don't want to go back to our high levels of class size. So we need to really be thinking through that when we assume, well, we would hope that every grade level would have five sections, and when you have seven, because of growth and use of programs, we're running out of space. I, I don't know how better to say it, and, but if we aren't telling that story and seeing how it's working, I think we do a disservice of saying what the needs of our division are. How about, as a summary, Dr. Benson and Mr. Hiran, I'm sorry, I know it's in your office, maybe next time, just to report back on maybe either a timeline for dealing with this or a process, but we can either bring the, the resolution back, but I think it's really, my intent on bringing it is we've got to start looking at it, and let's do it this summer before we run those stoplight charts, because.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's very smart.
Yes, Ms. Healy, I'm sorry.
I just have a comment. When I first came on the board, all we looked at was design capacity, and I had a problem with that, and I was one of the vocal ones that wanted to look at program capacity, because I kept saying, yes, the schools are designed, but you really can't educate that many children in there, because you have different needs, particularly in those elementary classrooms. So that's why we went to program capacity, and I think what we're really talking about here is program capacity, and as you're saying, as I mentioned earlier, it's going to float, it's going to change from year to year, depending on what programs are in that school, what, how many students are in it, and, and where they're assigned. So my question would be, rather than, you know, arbitrarily delete some of the design capacity or take a certain percentage off, why don't we just start looking at program capacity, which is exactly what I think you're talking about, but you could be more exact in it, and you could look each year at a school and see, which is almost what Dr. Clark has been doing when she's made recommendations to us, is to where to place these classes. You know, she looks at the schools and she sees where there's, there's room for it. And, and if you look at some of these schools with the, the lower, you know, enrollments, they're going to have more of the, the special ed because there were classrooms available. So, you know, I, I, I don't know why we even need to, and if we just look at program, that's what our story is, and that's what we reflect. How many students can we educate in these buildings? How many students, existing students that we have? And that's why I was talking about a division-wide review as well. We know how many classrooms we have, but we can't just multiply that. We need to know how many special ed, you know, classrooms and how many in each, because some might be two, and some might be ten, some might even be fifteen.
And we do that, we have that data.
Right.
We do that every year.
So we can just have a report back, oh, sorry, but is there at least a consensus of the board that this is something we need to be looking at as we move into fall when we calculate? Thank you, Mr. Hiran.
For the fall.
Right, over the summer, so we can use it when we get our enrollment figures and run it correctly. All right. We have gone through everything, we do have a closed session, board members, so I will have, Mr. Hirans, can you read us into closed session?
Madam Chair, pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that Stafford County School Board convening a closed meeting to discuss or consider a legal matter pursuant to the consultation with the Legal Counsel exemption of Section 2.23711A7 of the Code of Virginia in nineteen fifty as amended.
Sir, second.
It's been moved and seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are in closed session.